I'd like to call this meeting on Zion City Council order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Pastor?
Mayors, Commissioners, I want you to know that we pray for you at First Baptist and honored to be here tonight to lift you up. So let's pray right now. Father, as we come to you this night, Lord, we lift up to you a series of words that are important to us. Perseverance, respect, responsibility, integrity, safety, and kindness. These are more than simply statements and a character list. They make government work. So, Lord, we ask, would you endow us with these character traits? They are not inborn to the human experience. We look in the world around us and we recognize that this is abnormal to the human nature. And so we need another word to inspire us on to do these, and that is the gospel. Throughout this village, Father, would you help us to sense your grace and the good news you give to us in Jesus Christ so that, at the very least, we can treat one another with a similar type of grace and respect? May we show love, deference, and honor to one another, considering the other viewpoint, and opening up our heart to what is possible in the same way that you did for us in Jesus Christ? So it is in his powerful name we pray this. Amen.
Please stand and join me in the fudge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is agenda changes. Do any of the Commissioners have any agenda changes? Any Department? Is there a motion to accept the agendas presented?
Uh huh.
A motion and a second for discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number five is consent agenda.
Citizen.
Or, excuse me, citizen. Mr. Al White?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here this evening because of the city's violations, property violations, and have some pictures here if I could bring them up to present them to you. It's not a lot that many. I'd like to present these to you if you don't mind.
Sure.
That's the property in question.
Okay.
And these violations are for trash on the streets, unlawful, placed garbage or trash in alleys or streets, wind-blown refuge, disposal of bucket trash, and then also driveway. And the driveway was, I don't even consider it a driveway. The tenant that lives there has some space behind the garage, north of the garage, and it's about a, I think, about 14 by nine feet. And the tenant wanted somewhere to park his truck, so I told him he cleared out the space so he could park it, parked in my backyard. And so he put out some gravel and just enough space for him to park the truck. And so now I am told to remove the gravel. I can put down crushed gravel, which I could, that's no problem. Asphalt and some of that costs too much for that little, for that particular space. And so I wanted to see if I can leave what I have down there. It's not even visible to the streets. It's behind my garage, so when coming down 33rd, it's not even visible to the streets. In fact, when you turn up in the alley, it's just right off the corner of the alley there. It's not visible because you turn around, you shoot right on back. So, and then it's a part of my backyard. It's not a driveway because it's not leading to my garage or leading to my house. And so the space is more of just a parking space. And so I want to see if I can get around some of these issues because I don't know if he mistaken my property for someone else's property, which I, see, that's kind of hard to do. And in one of the pictures I show of a neighbor right down the street, you know, there's trash that's on the street there. And so my property, I'm a member, in fact, I'm the minister of the Church of Christ on 2218 Hebrew in Zion, been a minister there for quite a while, and I've been a member of Zion for quite a while. So, law of business is, and I pick up my trash, number one, on the streets. That's where I live, on Matthew Place, you know, you won't find any trash on the streets over there. And so I'm accustomed, if I see trash on my streets, or in front of my property, or in somebody else's property, I pick it up and I dispose of it.
Okay. Commissioner? Do you want to comment? What's the address?
The address is 2244, 2246 Elijah, in Zion.
Okay. Have you talked with anyone in our, in the Housing Department? Talked with one of the inspectors?
Uh, yeah, I have.
You know which inspector?
The inspector that does, I know he's kind of, kind of hard guy to talk to, Warren Ferret, I believe, is his name.
Okay.
And I know Bob Serrano is, you know, he's known him for quite a while. He's a pretty nice, pretty nice fellow.
Okay.
Me and him get along pretty good, you know, but I don't like to just kind of go over everybody's head and try to take it to the top.
Sure.
Yeah, and so I was looking at these things on here if you want to also take a look at this inspection sheet.
Yes, would like to do that, keep that in. Now, is your contact information on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, no, not my, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, this is my address. Please.
Okay. We'll look into it and get in touch with you. Mr. White, I would ask that you, Commissioner McKinney is in charge of all building and zoning matters, and Director Ianson, in the green shirt, he's responsible for the Building Department, and if you would meet with those two and hopefully we can get it all squared away.
Okay. Set up a table and we'll call him.
Yeah.
I call you.
Yeah, I'll give you a call. We'll get together and talk, and then I'll reach out to you. One of us will reach out to you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I appreciate it because I've been up in, like I said, I've been up in Zion for quite a while and, you know, and stuff like that, and my, I consider my property to be pretty clean.
Understand. I appreciate the fact that you came forward tonight, you know, if there's a complaint about something, we don't know unless somebody tells us, so I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, one more thing.
Sure. Okay.
It is on Elijah, I think that's around, should be around 30th Street, 29th and 30th. It is a court, tennis court and basketball court on that street there.
Right.
And it has been vacant for years, and I think that, you know, the city, if we can fix that up and fix up the tennis court, put some basketball rims up there, you know, get some of our youth off the streets.
Well, that is actually, that's actually Park District property.
Park District property, okay.
Yes, and they're responsible for that, but that basket and those tennis courts were taken down years ago at the request of the neighbors.
Really?
Yeah, because of some of the behavior that was going on out there, and it was out of control, and unless we had a police officer there the entire time, it was, that's why it came down.
Okay.
But that is Park District property. If they, if they decide that they wanted to change something, that's up to them at this point.
Okay, it's been quite a number of years, so, okay, I'll check that out.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number six is a consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on August 15th, 2017 at 7:02 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on August 15th, 2017 at 7:51 PM. Bills vouchers 127148 through 127321 drawn on First Merit Bank. Total $1,303,341.80. And the Buddy Poppies proclamation.
You have a proclamation here that I'll read. Says, "Whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. And whereas the VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas, the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in desire, in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, I Mayor Al Hill and the City Council of the City of Zion do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donations for Buddy Poppies on the days set aside, September 15th, 16th, 17th, 2017, for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. Be it further resolved that the City, Zion City Council urges all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Dated this 5th day of September, 2017, and assigned by the Mayor and the City Clerk." Come up and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Backwards.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Give your lead.
Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect.
Got your lead.
Yeah.
Right there.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve this proclamation and the consent agenda.
Hold on a second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number seven is considered passing resolutions as follows. 7A is amending personnel authorization per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. In anticipation of item 9B, last City Council meeting, we approved acceptance of the SAFE for grant. Before we can hire, we have to increase our personnel authorization, so I'm requesting we increase the fire rescue personnel authorization from the current 16 firefighter paramedics to 19 firefighter paramedics.
I'll make a motion that we amend the personnel authorization for firefighter paramedic from 16 to 19.
And I'm assuming that includes the change in the grant foundation?
From 0 to 3.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number seven is considered passing resolutions as follows. 7A is amending personnel authorization per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. In anticipation of item 9B, last City Council meeting, we approved acceptance of the SAFE for grant. Before we can hire, we have to increase our personnel authorization, so I'm requesting we increase the fire rescue personnel authorization from the current 16 firefighter paramedics to 19 firefighter paramedics.
I'll make a motion that we amend the personnel authorization for firefighter paramedic from 16 to 19.
And I'm assuming that includes the change in the grant foundation?
From 0 to 3.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 8 is considered passing ordinances as follows. 8A, rezoning property in the City of Zion, 5620 Route 1, Route 173. It's a second reading per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dock at 17Z5, Plating Zoning Commission recommended approval. The first reading, the City Council approved the rezoning.
Is there a motion? All moves to approve. Second. And we have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 8B is granting a special use permit for contractor storage yard for property located at 5621 Route 173. Second reading per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dock at 17Z6, Plating Zoning Commission recommended approval with conditions. The Council recommended approval with an additional condition that they install an eight-foot privacy fence to block out the streaming for the equipment on the first reading.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion? Second. In a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 8C is granting a variance from Zion Municipal Code, Section 102-202, parentheses four, permitted obstructions in yards, front yards, for property of 3146th Street. Second reading per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dock at 17Z7, Zoning Commission recommended approval, and the Council recommended approval on the first reading.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion? Second. In a second. Is there a discussion?
I think everybody should just know that this is the second time we've looked at these items, so that's why they're approved so quickly. We've already approved them once, and this is the second time around. I remember I was sitting out there once and, what's happening?
How can this be going so fast? This is actually, this is about a generator for Cancer Treatment Centers of America's transportation facility on 16th Street. They want to put a generator outside in the front yard, and there really is no front yard, so they've been given the variance. That's correct, isn't it?
That is correct.
Thank you. Yeah, and I should probably slow down a little bit. We have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Did we pass this already?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 8D is regarding the disposition of surplus property regarding a 2004 Chevy Impala per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I request the following vehicle be declared as surplus property and approved to be auctioned through Clinton Auto Auction. The City Maintenance Department has taken this vehicle out of service. It's a 2004 Chevy Impala, silver, VIN number 2G1WF52E44930875.
Is there a motion?
Motion to, yes.
I have a motion to approve. Second. In a second. Is there a discussion? Is this your vehicle?
Yes. It was, it was time.
It was well-worn, believe me.
We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
And there is also an ordinance regarding the disposition of surplus property, and so hopefully that's, we've got that taken. Item 8E is to lease certain property in the City of Zion for gamma radiation detection units per Clerk Burke Kemper. And I guess I'm, are you Clerk Burke Kemper or am I Clerk, I'm Clerk Burke Kemper today? This is to the Mayor and City Commissioners. On December 3rd, 2013, the City Council passed ordinance 13063, authorizing execution of a lease between the City of Zion and the State of Illinois, acting through the Illinois Emergency Management Agency for replacement and operation of three gamma radiation detection units, one at 3364 North Gabriel, one in the alley between Gideon and Gabriel Avenues, and one in the east-west alley between 20th and 21st Street west of Ezra Avenue. The current lease has expired. IMEA is requesting renewal of the lease as is, just extending the lease expiration date to June 30th, 2021. I respectfully request that the Council favorably consider this lease renewal and pass an ordinance authorizing the execution of the lease as presented. I'll make that motion. You have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Do you know why?
Yeah.
I knew this one. I was going to bring up some questions.
All right. So, I mean, it's to detect radiation. I'm assuming because we have a nuclear, we did have a nuclear generating facility. Why are those stations so far away from the facility?
They have other monitors that are very close to the facility.
All right, okay. They're just a second line of...
Yeah, how long has this been here? John, do you know?
The plant or?
No.
The detectors have been there almost since day one.
Okay.
So they're put out there by the Illinois Emergency Management Agency. It's not part of the plant itself.
Right.
So they do real-time analysis, so every one of the, there are seven nuclear plants in the state, so they put them in a radius around the plant just to detect gamma radiation for, it's basically in the event there's an accident, or it's really just for assessing environmental damage from gamma radiation or if there isn't. So they're always out there. You see in the big silver boxes sitting by the side road, you probably just never knew what they were. And they just sit there and collect data. Hopefully, not much data.
Commissioner, you have a question?
No, that, Commissioner McDowell and I had this thing, question, pretty much.
We received phone calls from two newspapers when they saw the item on the chapter today, wondering if this had anything to do with the spent fuel rods, and it does not. It just has to do with the nuclear plant being there. So, we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 8G is establishing an administrative procedure to determine eligibility for benefits under the Illinois Public Safety Benefits Act for Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Before you have an ordinance establishing an administrative procedure for the PCEBA Act, the Public Safety Benefits Act, and basically that act says that we are to continue providing benefits as currently provided for any public safety employee who is either killed or catastrophically injured in the line of duty. This just establishes a public hearing, so the city has a seat at the table to be able to put input into the process when determining eligibility for that act. In the past, I believe the Pension Board was always granting duty disability or benefits, and then we kind of piggyback on their ruling. However, this gives us the opportunity in a public hearing to basically interject if there is any objections or just to concur with that ruling for benefits.
I'll make a motion that we approve this ordinance for administrative procedure for determining eligibility for PCEBA.
You have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 8G, establishing an administrative procedure to determine eligibility for benefits under the Illinois Public Safety Benefits Act for Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Before you have an ordinance establishing an administrative procedure for the PCEBA Act, the Public Safety Benefits Act, and basically that act says that we are to continue providing benefits as currently provided for any public safety employee who is either killed or catastrophically injured in the line of duty. This just establishes a public hearing, so the city has a seat at the table to be able to put input into the process when determining eligibility for that act. In the past, I believe the Pension Board was always granting duty disability or benefits, and then we kind of piggyback on their ruling. However, this gives us the opportunity in a public hearing to basically interject if there is any objections or just to concur with that ruling for benefits.
I'll make a motion that we approve this ordinance for administrative procedure for determining eligibility for PCEBA.
You have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, the appointment of a PCEBA claims administrator, we're suggesting that that be the city clerk. Would we also want to put the human, our, what, we hope to be a new human resources administrator to oversee this process, or is it something?
I thought that's who was.
Well, it says that the city clerk is hereby appointed as PCEBA claims administrator.
I think that's in the meantime, and I'm reading Administrative Composition Appointment of PCEBA Claims Administrator, Human Resources Director is hereby appointed as a PCEBA Claims Administrator.
I might have a page two copy of it.
Oh, okay, this is page two.
It originally was, but it was changed to Human Resources Director, so to your point, it's already, it was a good point and already addressed.
Good point, yeah. Ahead of us. All right. This just establishes the procedure for having a hearing, but it doesn't say anything about the qualifications for someone to apply for PCEBA. At least, I didn't read it here. Or is that something, is that?
It's something different. This is just setting up the process.
This is just to establish a hearing process.
The hearing process, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think anybody, I mean, anybody could apply.
If they need to.
There isn't, there isn't, I think you have to, at that point, then this group would...
Well, there is criteria, and if I recall correctly, the criteria is catastrophic injury.
Right.
And I've always had this question, and I don't know if we have an answer for it here, but what does catastrophic mean exactly?
It's somewhat spelled out in the act.
Yeah, it's determined by the state act. But there has been gray area that's been determined in the past.
And it's different interpretations.
So, would a hearing clarify that? Would that come into question if someone applies for PCEBA benefits and there's a question, is this really catastrophic? Would that come up in a hearing process?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
This is just the procedure to determine whether or not that the applicant is eligible for those benefits, so that would all be flushed out during that process.
And without, I don't mean to insult anybody, I just, that's not what I'm saying here, but I think your point is well-taken. I think the definition of what is catastrophic would be most helpful because I guess I question when an individual who may have been hurt in the line of duty working for the city as a first responder gets PCEBA benefits and then they've got another job someplace else. I don't get it.
Well, and that's what this is.
Well, I know.
Set to establish that.
But his point is well-taken. What is catastrophic? If catastrophic, to me, catastrophic is you can't work, so you get these benefits because you can't work, and I, I find it irritating.
Well, we now have, we have a process in place where that can be...
We would have input on a hearing, right.
Well, it would seem like it would have to be determined catastrophic would be mental or, or physical, or both.
Right, and I think that's what we have to look to our legal counsel for what's, what is catastrophic.
I think it's part of it too, not to linger, but it's not so much, what is the injured catastrophic? But what caused the injury?
Right.
So if I'm sitting here and I fall down and hit my head, and now I'm paralyzed for the rest of my life, was I working in the capacity of my job in an emergency, or did I fall out of the seat? That's kind of where we start going with PCEBA benefits.
Right, and you also have the issue of, I'm collecting catastrophic benefits, and, I mean, they're quite generous, the catastrophic benefits, but I have the ability to go work for another department somewhere. It's like, wait a minute. I, I don't understand how it can be catastrophic and not catastrophic enough that you can work for somebody else. But that's above my pay grade right now.
All the more reason why we should implement a policy so that we can, a procedure so that these issues can be addressed.
Beneficiaries of PCEBA, or is this all new applicants?
Going forward, going forward.
The state hasn't enacted some new procedures though in order to, um, keep up with the ones that are currently on PCEBA, and we've enacted those. Diane Burke has executed some of those procedures. Some of the questions you're asking, are procedures that are in place to start collecting data? Just what the mayor's bringing up, whether or not they're working someplace else.
Does that, if I understand. We, we pay the third highest PCEBA benefits out of all the cities in the state of Illinois. 25,000 population Zion, Illinois versus Rockford, Peoria, you know, Des Plaines and Naperville. So I, I think we, I, this is well done, this is put together. Probably should have put something together a long time ago, but, um, thank you for putting in the effort to do this. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8H is an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed $3,700,000 taxable general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source series 2017 of the city for the purposes of refunding certain outstanding obligations of the city, setting forth certain details of said bonds, including the pledge of certain revenue to the payment of principal and interest on said bonds and the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay such principal and interest if the pledged revenues are insufficient to make such payments, authorizing the deposit of said taxes directly into a designated escrow account and authorizing the execution of a tax escrow agreement in connection therewith, and authorizing the execution of the bond purchase agreement with Fifth Third Security, Chicago, Illinois, in connection with the sale of said bonds per Director Nabel.
He said it all.
Now, would you like to explain what?
In layman's terms, yes.
Basically, um, we've had the, the process going along for a while for, for the, the potential issuance of these bonds. We had the, the initial authorization to go to market. We had the public hearing to take in public comment before now passing, or, but having the first reading of the ordinance authorizing us to actually go issue these bonds. On September 19th, we'll have the, is it 19th? September 19th, we'll have the second reading on this ordinance as required for the, for the Bond Notification Act. So this is just, we have a balloon payment on an existing ser- the series 2014 bonds for the purchase of the property at Green Bay 173. There's a balloon payment in the year 20, November 2019. We're looking to refinance those to extend that term out. This basically says that we could levy a tax on that as all general obligation bonds we can, but we're pledging replacement tax revenues as a revenue stream, as collateral on that bond. And as long as we have those funds as, those replacement taxes in escrow to, in sufficient amounts and sufficient time to pay the principal, we don't levy an additional tax for the, the principal and interest on this. But the, the bond investors like to have that in there to say, you know, if there isn't enough money in there, we'll still get our money. But we, that's not the intention, and that's not the case on any of our alternate revenue bonds. We all put the, the funds in escrow.
And, and the alternate revenue source here to pay off these bonds?
That's the, uh, Illinois personal property replacement tax. So we have to have, I think, 350,000 a year, which is like one and, one and a quarter times the actual principal payment amount. We have like 420,000. So that's the pledged revenue source that they could intercept, basically. We didn't make payments.
Dave, that's through the, the local government distribution fund, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that comes through the state. They basically collect the personal property replacement tax and distribute it to us.
Is there a motion? I'll move to approve. Motion?
Could you read the ordinance for us? I don't think we have a time to see you, but I would encourage everyone to take a look. And the property is for sale. If anybody wants to buy the property, it's for sale.
Second.
We do have somebody coming Thursday to look at the lights, so we're trying to sell what we can. To a minor league baseball team from Sheboygan. Um, it really is.
Um, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9A is consider zoning dock at 17Z9 requesting a special use permit to operate a church. It's petitioned by Love and Grace Worship Center located at 2248 Sharon Road, Suites 1 and 2 for Director Ionson. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval. And you have a special use permit in front of you, and I believe there is an attached ordinance. There was a request to fast-track this because, uh, the church needed a place as quickly as they could. So, uh, your ordinance is included in this along with the approval here, rather than coming, waiting another two weeks. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this request.
Is there a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
That, that covers the ordinance.
Item 9V is request permission to fill three firefighter paramedic vacancies and request the names of the next qualified candidates from the Board of Police and Fire Commission firefighter paramedic eligibility list per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Continuing through with the process. Last meeting, we approved the safer grant. Earlier in this meeting, we approved authori- or revision to the authorization personnel. Now I'm requesting council to, uh, approve having the Fire and Police Commission contact the next three eligible candidates on the current eligibility list for firefighter paramedic.
I'll make that motion. Is there a motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there a discussion? Uh, for the public information, we've received a grant to hire three additional firemen for a period of three years. With the money that we're getting from the government, from the federal government, I believe, is it federal grant? Federal money?
Yeah, BMO.
Uh, the money that we're getting from the federal government, plus what we will be saving in overtime, what it's actually going to cost the city, or minus what we will be saving in overtime, it's actually going to cost the city $45,000 a year to have all three additional firemen on for three years. So, uh, it's over, what was it, 700,000, 800,000 dollars worth of benefits that we're going to get for approximately 135,000. So, um, it's a good grant, and congratulations, John, and David, and anybody that worked on putting this together. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9C is consider approval of intergovernmental agreement binding between the City of Zion Fire Rescue Department and the Beach Park Fire Protection District regarding equipment and personnel sharing per Chief Lewis.
Thank you again, Your Honor. As we move forward in working with our functional consolidation of Beach Park, one area that we saw a need for clarification related to the sharing of equipment and personnel, uh, this is basically something we've been doing for many years anyways between our neighboring departments. We've just never formalized it. So as a housekeeping measure, we developed a intergovernmental agreement for the equipment and personnel sharing. And right now, it sits between our settled in Beach Park, but there's a hope that we go ahead and get with Barbara, Newport, possibly Pleasant Prairie involved in this as well.
I'll make a motion that we approve this intergovernmental agreement.
A motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I just have a, a couple of questions. So the, the current agreement that we have for the Quad One North, does it also cover some of these same?
No, the Quad One North is simply a response agreement for mutual aid. This is, um, for starters, what we use it for now is if we have an engine that goes down, we'll take one of their engines and put it in our station. Right now, we have nothing that says, you can, and you can't, other than a handshake and a thank you at the end. This kind of clarifies a little bit. It says we can trade the equipment back and forth, use it as needed, and be covered.
If there were to be, um, some kind of a, an accident that takes place with one of these vehicles that we're borrowing, uh, this agreement covers it.
Mm-hmm.
But apart from an agreement like this, what, what do the other departments do if there's an accident or something like that?
You hope that they're good guys and they're going to pay for what they did?
So this might, this may very well be of interest to the other departments then.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the first time. I, I would say in the past, we've had equipment that's got damaged, and, and we're on the hook for it.
Yeah. Thanks, who, Mayor?
Who's on the hook for it? The borrowing department or the lending department?
The borrowing. If I have a beach park engine in my station and I accidentally drive it into something else, I don't deliver it back with the dent and say, oops, sorry, we got to fix it, so.
And we have insurance, of course.
And we have insurance for it, yeah.
And, and our insurance does apply to borrowed vehicles?
I assume so. I hope so.
Well, now we're, we have an agreement.
Yeah, now we have an agreement, yeah.
Well, we'll move on to. Is there a motion? Do we have a motion in a second? Okay. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Um, item 9D, tabulation of bids, fire engine per Chief Lewis.
All right, last time, thank you, Your Honor. Our fiscal year '18 budget included funds in the amount of 572,658 dollars to replace our reserve engine, which is a 1992 Pierce. Our new engine is slated to become a front lighting apparatus. Um, our truck, which is a 2002 Pierce, will move to Station 1 and be utilized for commercial and high-rise responses as well as serving as a reserve. That's a million, million-plus vehicle to replace, so the sooner we put it in reserve, the longer we can extend its lifetime. Uh, we put together a set of specs. We sent them out for bid. We had one response come back for a bid opening, and that was from Fire Service Inc. for an E1 rescue pumper. Came in with two options. The options were based on a number of inspection trips. Option number one was 479,684. Option number two was 467,485. Both of these options include a performance bond and a discount for 100% prepaid. After a discussion with Director Nabel, it was decided the best option for the city, based on financing, was to decline the 100% prepaid discount and save on the performance bond, bringing the total cost for option two down to 465,623. I respectfully request council's approval to accept Fire Service Inc.'s bid in the amount of 465,623 for an E1 rescue pumper contingent on securing our financing by Director Nabel, which he should be bringing to the September 15th council meeting.
I'll make the motion that we approve option two at 465,623. Pending proper financing on David Nabel.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? I've got a question in the, in the, the last sentence, uh.
Uh, cut and paste.
Okay, so, so we're not buying an ambulance either. Okay, thank you. I don't remember that in the budget talks.
That was a template. Oh, it's in the budget talks.
Oh, it is? But it was, okay.
It was.
I saw that, I was going to bring that up too.
That's a template.
Yeah, $162,000 ambulance. That's hard to slip in. Um, okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9E, consider amendment to sick leave policy per clerk Burke Kemper. On December 20th, 2016, the city council adopted an amended sick leave policy pursuant to Public Act 099-0841, Employee Sick Leave Act, which took effect on January 1st, 2017, which allows employees to use personal paid sick leave benefits provided by the City of Zion for absence due to illness, injury, or medical appointment of the employee's family on the same terms upon which the employee is able to use sick leave benefits for the employee's own illness or injury. Per the city's sick leave policy and bargaining unit contracts, all personnel except for fire rescue department personnel earn one sick day for each full month of employment, or 12 sick days for each full year of employment, or 96 hours per year. It has come to my attention that this policy needs clarification regarding the number of family member sick leave hours allowed per year for both union and non-union fire rescue department personnel. The current policy references sick leave accrual in use in days rather than hours, which has brought into question how the family member sick leave time for fire rescue personnel should be calculated. The fire rescue personnel bargaining unit contract states that the employee shall earn sick leave pay at the rate of 12 hours for each full month of continuous employment up to a total of 144 hours for a continuous work year. The employee handbook states that for non-union fire rescue shift personnel, employees shall earn sick leave pay at the rate of one-half shift day for each full month of continuous employment up to a total of six shifts, 144 hours for a continuous work year. Per Public Act 099-0841, an employee may limit, or employer may limit the use of personnel sick leave benefits provided by the employee, employer for absences due to an illness, injury, or medical appointment of the employee's child, spouse, sibling, and parent to an amount not less than the personal sick leave that would be accrued during the six months at the employee, at the employee's then-current rate of entitlement. If fire rescue department personnel earn 144 hours per year as opposed to all other personnel who earn 96 hours per year, then no less than six months of family member sick leave equals 72 hours, not the 48 hours, which represents no less than six months of family member sick leave for all other personnel. I respectfully request that the council amend the employee sick leave policy as presented. Uh, the explanation to all that is that most employees work 2,080 hours a year, and there's a direct correlation between the 2,080 hours a year and the 12 sick days that they get. A fireman generally works 2,876 hours a year. They work almost, oh, a quarter more than, put in a quarter more hours because they're 24 on, 48 off, than a regular employee. So in order to equalize the sick leave benefits, we are, we would raise the, um, amount that they can use for sick leave from, uh, to 100, 144 hours per year as opposed to the 96 hours per year. And then no less than six months of family member sick leave equals 72 hours and not the 48 hours.
We have a motion that we amend the sick leave policy?
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there further discussion? Questions? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9F, consider appointment of FOIA Freedom of Information Act officer for clerk Burke Kemper. She took off on, for a meeting where she's had more things before the council than any other meeting in all the time I've been here, but. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, a public body must designate one or more officials or employees to act as a FOIA officers. Currently, the city clerk and deputy city clerk serve as city hall FOIA officers. Deputy Chief Henderson serves as a police department FOIA officer. With my retirement approaching, I believe it would be prudent to appoint a FOIA officer to replace me as soon as possible. The city clerk would continue to be the first-line FOIA officer with the alternative stepping up in the city clerk's absence. I recommend that Sonny DeBronson be appointed as FOIA officer. If so designated by the city council, Ms. Bronson would be required to complete the FOI- online FOIA officer training course within 30 days, days after assuming the position. And based on clerk Burke Kemper's recommendation, I would appoint Sonny DeBronson to be the, uh, second FOIA officer here in city hall.
I'll move to approve this appointment.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9G is consider appointment of the fire pension board for Mayor Hill. I'd like to appoint Director Nabel to the fire pension board. Is there a motion?
Approve.
Motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9H is discussion regarding possible exchange due GPT Enterprise Special Use Permit Ordinance 13061 for Commissioner McDowell.
Right, thank you. Um, this is the Dungeons of Doom operated by GPT Enterprises. So what I'd like us to take a look at, um, you have a copy of the ordinance, so it's page four. And items number six, seven, and eight. Um, we have been placing barricades on, on 29th and 27th Streets. And I live in the area, and I just noticed that those barricades are unattended and often sidestepped by motorists. So they either move the barricades or just go around them. I, I see in the grass, you know, tire marks from people that have just gone around those barricades. I think the reason that we, we were interested in barricading those roads and directing traffic down Shiloh Boulevard as entry to the haunted house is excessive traffic in the area, and I just haven't noticed it to be a real issue. So I'd like to suggest that we not put the barricades up, at least give it a try this year. Uh, I talked to Chief Dumian and Chief Lewis about it. I haven't had a chance to talk to. I haven't had a chance to talk to Director Colangelo, but, I mean, if it is an issue, we can put them back up. Now, the language here is, is my question. It says the barricades and other traffic directing devices shall be placed in such a manner and at such locations as may be determined necessary by the chief of police and the director of public works. So does that mean we have to put the barricades up?
No, it's within their discretion.
It's at their discretion? All right.
And just, just for clarification, we can discuss this ordinance because it has been enacted, but we really can't change any of the language in this. The applicant went through the public hearing.
Okay.
And the council at the time, so the city doesn't have the authority to unilaterally make any changes to this.
Okay.
But, I mean, we can, you can discuss your points, but item six specifically says as may be determined.
Yeah.
Necessary. So at the time, not knowing how things were going to play out because this was a new use in that area, the city retained the discretion through the chief of police and the director of public works to determine what, if anything, was necessary.
Okay.
So, so that still stays with the city.
All right.
For example, if the operator required or requested things, the ultimate authority is, the discretion is with the department heads, the chief and Director Colangelo.
All right. So that, that was a clarification. I didn't know if shall meant we have to, but it can be determined then?
As may be determined necessary.
Okay.
Can you clarify the second part of that? It says notwithstanding the foregoing.
Twenty-seventh Street and Twenty-Ninth shall not be utilized. So they are prohibited. You cannot use Twenty-seventh and Twenty-Ninth as an entrance or exit route to and from the Haunted House attraction.
And I think the way that that can be addressed is in the literature that GPT Enterprises publishes, and on the signage that we have on, on the streets, it directs people to Shiloh Boulevard as the entrance. So we put the barricades in place to kind of enforce that, but apart from having someone stationed there, I don't think the enforcement really works, and that's why I'm suggesting we not put the barricades up.
Is it people going to the Haunted House, or is it local traffic, people trying to get to their houses?
I don't, yeah, I'm not really sure who.
Well, they're, they're actually at Edina and Twenty-Ninth and Edina and Twenty-seventh, so.
Yeah.
The only people that would be, be going east are, would be primarily people going to the Dungeon of Doom.
Okay, so it's, it's past that point where the residences are?
Yes.
Into that area near the train tracks where the barricades?
It's right at Edina and Twenty-seventh and Twenty-Ninth, so anybody going that would live on Edina is already at their house. They can get to their house without going around or through the barricades.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I don't think it's necessary.
I guess, my question is, is it a, is it a problem? I mean, right now, I just, I can tell you, I've got like a list of three, four, five, six people that I'm going to get calls from because the barricades aren't out there and there's no talking to them. There's no talking to them. And I'm just, my, my only question is if it's not hurting anything to have the barricades out there, and it seems to be working except for some people going around them. I'm just, because aren't we, I mean, it used to be that, it's my understanding, ESDA would put them out and pick them up, and now it's, who puts them out?
Dave, who puts them out? You guys put them out the first night, right?
We brought them the first night, police department picks them up, and we have some ESDA members that currently work down there. They put them out, the police department picks them up at their leisure in the night of night.
When you say pick them up, you mean they pick them and move them to the side of the road?
Move sides to the road.
Right.
It's not a big issue, but I just, you know, people are driving on the grass, and I'm getting phone calls about people driving on the grass.
I'm going to send help phone calls to you. You said that driving on the grass wants to be.
I'll tell them to call, I'll tell them to call the mayor. The, the other issue that I, I'd like to bring to our attention is the use of the electronics signboard, our emergency signage, which is a big electronic sign, it's that orange one. Now, what I've noticed is that when you're driving down Sheridan Road and that, that sign is up, the message is so long that you only get part of it. And I, I also think it's an eyesore. Actually, the signage that they, they have, the, the black signs with the white letters are much clearer. So I'd like to suggest we not use the electronic signboard on Sheridan Road, which is really kind of for a more emergency-type direction. I don't think it really works very well. I think the signage that they have, the black signs with the white letters, very clear, and just use that instead. It's my suggestion. And we do have the discretion about that sign. That's it. That's all I wanted to say. Any discussion, department heads? Director of ESDA?
The black and white signs which Commissioner McDowell was discussing, those are also owned by the City of Zion, those are ESDA and over there. If we were to do that, that would be fine, but we would need a budget, a budget amendment because we would need many more signs to do.
No, it says we can, the, the next point is that, that they are allowed to put up directional signage, and that we have made and.
They have to pay for it.
Yeah, right.
Currently, there are signs installed.
Okay. You guys have any input?
The only issue we've had over the years is getting personnel down there. So ESDA used to man every intersection, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but they used to man every intersection, and the intersection of Twenty-Fifth and Deborah.
And then they're out there from six o'clock till two in the morning. And then it got harder and harder to staff those nights. And then it got to, okay, we just put barricades, and then we had to put an extra barricade down now on Deborah.
So it seems like the barricades are being driven a little bit by what helps Dungeon of Doom, a little bit by what helps the city with traffic. From an ESDA coordinator aspect, I just look at getting somebody down there to put the barricades in place, and then every year we lose a few barricades because they're laying on the side of streets, and suddenly somebody decides they need a barricade for home. What they do with them, I don't know, but how many do we lose a year?
That's another thing, I don't know what happens.
We lost six last year, and, and we, we did find out that some of the scrappers were coming through and grabbing our steel barricades and just taking them. We had, we had signage ended up in the.
And so that's a costly, we got to buy new barricades every year, at a couple hundred dollars apiece probably. So just a couple things tied into that, so we're putting the barricades out, and we're losing money on the barricades, buying new barricades, and would we do this for somebody else?
Well, these things, I mean, keep in mind, these things are all done.
No, I, I.
Because we didn't, we didn't know what the, the traffic flow was going to be like.
And actually, I, I agreed with this because we thought there would be a lot of traffic going in and out of the neighborhoods, and I do live in that vicinity, and I just don't notice it. I, I think the traffic flow is, is fine. It's not, it's not an issue that requires barricades, and barricades are slightly unsightly, is my opinion.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not going to follow my sort of.
I'm not either.
I'm just, I know, I know, but I'm just thinking, if we don't have a traffic problem and it has been working, why would we change it, perhaps find out that it's not going to work? And I'll just tell them that they should call a fire chief and flood a barricades. I'm only kidding. I'll talk to them. So I, I don't know, how do we proceed on it?
There's not a change.
Just a discussion, just a discussion.
It's warranted a possible change, but we, we can't change this ordinance. I think Commissioner McDowell was one of them.
My only, my only concern was the shall barricade, and you clarified that by saying that we can determine if the barricades.
Well, it says, yeah, because it specifically says as determined by the chief.
Then can I suggest that Commissioner McDowell and the police and fire chief and the director of ESDA get together prior to determine what you want to do, and please keep an eye on the traffic flow?
Just remember, my name's not in the ordinance.
Yeah, it is. It's in my.
Wait, director of public works.
It's in, it's in my ordinance.
I believe you're the coordinator of the ESDA.
That's also not the ordinance.
It's in my ordinance. If you, if you would do that and keep an eye on it, because I, I would hate to have a blow up.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Item ten is departmental commentary. Yep. Department heads have anything they want to say? Item eleven, announcements, Thursdays through September twenty-ninth, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Zion Farmers Market. Location change is one block east, Sheridan Road between Elam and Elizabeth Avenue. September nineteenth, 6:30 PM is Zion Council Board meeting. Seven o'clock, there's a Zion City Council meeting. And I do want to take a moment to just let everybody know that there is a Zion Area Job Fair Wednesday, September thirteenth, from 9:30 AM to 12:30 PM. It's at the Zion Leisure Center, and it is sponsored by our state Senator Melinda Bush. And there is a pre-job fair workshop, and that is September sixth, 10:00 AM to 10:45 at the Job Center of Lake County on One North Genesee, and they will go over learning to maximize a job fair and practice your introductory speech in this interactive workshop and work on your resume. So that will be available for anybody who is looking to participate in a job fair.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I just add something? The Historical Society and the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring a Walk Through Time, which is a dramatic portrayal of the history of Zion on September tenth, starting at 2:00 PM at the Shiloh, at Dowey's house, the Shiloh house. You'll be, you'll be given a tour through the Dowey house, a guided tour, and then taken to Mount Olivet Cemetery, where some historical figures from the founding of Zion will be there, coming back from the dead to talk to you a little bit about the history of Zion. So it should be a unique event. John Alexander Dowey himself will be there. You see how that guy looks right there in that? We have a resident in our city that looks exactly like him. It's uncanny. And then on September fourteenth, we have the Community of Character Walk sponsored by the Park District and the Zion Police Department. It's going to start at the Banshell, walk down the Boulevard to the police station, and they'll be on display some of the, the good things that are happening in the city. Community organizations will have tables there about some of the services that are provided in the city. It's really been a great event. It's been our fourth year we've done it.
Thank you. I would also like to congratulate the Zion Chamber of Commerce and Rich Walker for putting together the Jubilee Days activities yesterday and over the weekend. I want to thank Commissioner McDowell and the Zion Ministerial Association for the, their work on the prayer breakfast yesterday, it was a great presentation. I'd like to thank Zion Park District for all that they do for Jubilee Days, they're all involved in it. And then I'd also like to congratulate, congratulate all the young girls that participated in the Zion Queen Pageant and particularly the, the winners, and just congratulate them and anybody who, I know somebody probably feels bad that they didn't win, but it's, they say if you're in the ring fighting, it's, you've, you've got about 90% of the battle over with, and I just want to congratulate all of them that participated, so. We have, item number twelve is a closed session. We have need for a closed session tonight pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash two, open meetings for the discussion of collective bargaining. Is there a motion to go into executive set or closed session? Is there a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?